To, uh, thank you councillor Harvey. Councillor Jeremy, if you could please take the chair. That would be very helpful. Thank you very much. No, you can't vote him off now that we've started. I can see we're in for trouble this evening. I will help you as much as I can. I have numerous amounts of information here.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got a big list, so we'll, um, we'll prep on and make a start. And my nervousness was because I was only going to be staying for an hour tonight, but, um, I suspect I'll be staying for longer. Uh, item three one nine, any declarations of any disposable community interests, please? None, thank you very much. Are there any apologies for absence, Karen?
So there's Brain, Karen, Hodgkinson, Wallace, James and Rod.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, three, two, one minutes. These are the minutes from the ninth of August. Planning committee, uh, they should be fresh in your minds, basically. Last night, but are you happy that they're a true record?
Yes.
Still a true record. Okay, so, uh, we've got a nice long list of, uh, planning applications, which, uh, some of them are fresher than others, uh, because we had a, uh, meeting cancelled during September because of, uh, the period of mourning for the Queen. Uh, so we'll start off with, uh, Plan A. Uh, ask the clerk to introduce that one, please.
So, um, Plan A is twenty five, which is for prior approval. And this is the notification of intention to erect a single story rear family room extension, projecting from the rear wall by four point eight metres deep with a maximum height of two point eight and eaves height of two point eight metres. And this is at seven Norfolk Road. So if I can get my mouse, it's decided to stop working. So, uh, I'm sure that you all aware of, uh, the location. So that's where it is on Norfolk Road. And this is where the proposed flat extension is going to be to the rear of the property. And they can see that the, on, you can see that there is, um, similar in the area. So it's a single story extension to go into this area on the patio that's in the photograph.
Yeah, thank you. Any immediate comments, anyone, please?
Just don't like flat roofs, but yeah, it's fine.
Okay, um, bearing that in mind, are we happy to support this application? Yeah, I see plenty of nods.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to B, uh, Castle Street, this is one that we've seen, uh, previously, but it's, uh, been revised, I believe. So it's the one behind the Albion.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, my mouse has just decided to stop working. Bear with me for two seconds. So yeah, um, this is the revised, um, it's for a four detached development section, and this is the second revision. TTC has previously objected twice in March and July. The, um, objections previously, um, we, uh, we put remained in July. And that town council also support the comments of the commentator, uh, contaminated land officer and the tree officer in field. Be rescued by the bell councillor Jeremy. Thank you very much for putting yourself into the fray.
Apology.
Job well done.
Yes, well done. We've absolutely whipped through. Uh, we said that we were unhappy that it was an infill development, overdevelopment of the area. Uh, there would be an increase of traffic. Uh, we were unhappy with the layout density of the buildings and thought it was an inappropriate development for the residents. Um, since then, uh, with the revised, the HBO has no objection. Um, but the submission materials confirms that the proposed development will basically, um, be a continuation as a circa twentieth century development immediately to the west. The proposed sighting and scale of the proposed element is not considered to have a detrimental impact on the setting of the collective designated and non-designated heritage assets. So the, um, tree officer has asked for an AIA. Um, the contaminated lands are previous comments, which is that they would expect certain testing to be done as part of the methodology. And highways is also, um, are normal conditions that come forth on any of these.
Yes.
What is an AIA?
It's an impact assessment. A bore real.
A bore real.
A bore real impact assessment. You're just testing me, aren't you? It's been a long day. So if I can just show you a few more slides now that councillor Wright is here. Chat amongst yourselves. Or perhaps I won't. I'm going to take mine myself. It's not very clear. Oh, it's all going crazy now. I'm sorry about this. Yes, yours, because I think mine's on the blink. Thank you very much. Much can put in and out of laptop bags. Oh, look at that. See? Thank you very much. Okay, so this is the proposed site. You can see the four plots on top. So that's just the revised documentation on that one.
Funny, I don't know, it affects memory to me, but it's funny hard to judge whether this revised plan has taken on board the points that we made last time. Um, I mean, I think it is better, but I don't.
No, it hasn't.
The points we made.
No.
I was trying to look. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It feels like, I think it was July when we looked at this.
Well, we looked at it in March and July.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, uh, this is the revised outline plan for it. So not, not a great deal.
I think one of our, you know, main things was the way it's going through Lambeth and the access road. Yeah. Something that we didn't feel appropriate. And also when you've got the actual parking spaces in the, the turning there, um, it was something I think we felt maybe inadequate, um, which, yeah, I don't think has been too much changed to that.
So did you want to uphold previous objections?
I would, yeah.
Yeah. Has anybody contacted the council? Because I can see online that there's been a number of people wanting to object, but I'm not aware of anyone objecting to us.
No.
Okay, to understand what was raised last time.
So we are uphold previous objections. Okay.
Moving on to C then, seven four five six. So you've got Robert with us. Did you need to speak to me?
I'd like to speak and verify some of the clear objections.
Okay, answers are happy for me to know that you can speak.
Okay, um, so, uh, I think it's four objections, but, um, firstly, urban development is clearly subject to judgment, however, site density is similar to or lower than the seams in Old Cropsman Road. Hospital site, which were positively supported by the town council. Furthermore, policy com only three of the level plan positively encourages higher density in urban sites for transport infrastructure. Um, subject of gardens, gardens are a very fortunate future quality community in the sense they are satisfying and it's even more interesting enjoying. Um, item three, and this can be available with boarding for previous season. But seem to be confused now to the access road connects between those. And it is a highway requirement that the back access shall be on green roads and not from the current service route. Um, the, um, and then there's the comments about, um, access has served most of the day as well. The proposed road layout provided by access and Tony has been reserved and then. And in four, which apparently two bits are access from the rear sterling. The eastward one has enjoyed undefeated access since the early nineteen eighties. And the westward one has provided vehicle access since its acquisition in nineteen thirty, gaining back to students. The private romance road ownership is shared that the owners of none of the property gave the road. And two of the property that was like, we asked and read out the road, um, that just clarifies what ownership is, but it's not, that's a civil matter, not, not a private issue.
Question for the members.
Resume the meeting then.
Comments, please, anything? Sorry, sorry.
Oh, you're okay?
Yes.
I, I sent you a letter, uh, seems like it's something, but obviously because the meetings have been delayed. But basically my, my thoughts are the same. I've written the test as well, which is really out of the way of waste of time. Um, I just want to highlight, and I mean, I'm glad that the gate, I'm not a definitionist, but the gates have been removed. So it kind of sounds like they're, they're recognizing there's some kind of access problem there. And I showed you a copy of my deeds, which make it quite clear what that says, what that ownership is. Um, the real, the real worry I've got, apart from the usual issues of being overlooked and the fact that the, the houses are at our end of the, of the, um, development. Um, the real issue I've got is with the, um, I personally, it's not, this is me speaking on behalf of myself, is that the fence that separates the development from the private lane is what I'm suggesting, is inadequate. And in fact, near my property, it's, it's down by shopping. And so I think, yeah, I can picture a situation in fifteen years' time, even ten years' time, where the fence starts to fall down, somebody decides to put an access gate in their backyard to give access to a private road. Um, there's a piece of fence that, um, doesn't appear to have ownership, which to me is that some, anybody could come in, knock the fence down, and then there would be complete access from the highly, high density populated, being tried close through our road. Uh, private to the station or to the leisure centre or even into town. Um, so I've got a real worry that over time, there are going to be individual officers, the houses, they're going to build their own gates in their back garden. Um, and also the, the area that could be, where ownership is not quite clear. That could actually just be pushed down. And then suddenly there will be a whole new access route from flea place to, um, into town. And that would be via this private road, which I believe I've got some, um, obligations to maintain. I might, I might want to check on the lease again, but I think the, that, that has to do with me to make sure my part of that road is actually kind of maintained. So obviously there's going to be a lot more footfall. That then means that, you know, that's going to kind of be additional responsibilities, if that's actually, if what I'm saying is correct, which I believe it is, but I'm not fully technical.
So on that matter, obviously what we can do is just to dedicate the plans that have been put before us. And if the plans show a fence being in situ, then there's very little that we can do.
And it, it might be useful to read out, um, what highways have said. So, um, highways have said that on the basis of the existing commercial use of this site, this authority does not wish to raise an objection subject to the following conditions and informative note being imposed. So SHC twelve variations means a vehicular access to and egress from the development hereby permitted shall be derived from and to leave per close only. Reasons in the interest of highway safety and traffic movement. SHC fifteen, notwithstanding the submitted details unless otherwise agreed in writing by the local planning authority, the proposed private drive shall be maintained in perpetuity at a minimum width of four point eight metres for its complete length. Reasons in the interest of highway safety and traffic movement. SHG twenty one, prior to the first occupation, the development hereby permitted, the proposed parking and turning area shall be laid out, demarcated, leveled, surfaced and drained in accordance with the approved plan and retained thereafter available for that specific use. Reason to ensure the permanent availability of parking manoeuvring areas in the interest of satisfactory development and highway safety. So the informative note is, please be aware, it is the applicant's responsibility to clarify the boundary with public highways. Private structures such as fences or walls will not be permitted on highway land. The highway boundary may not match the applicant's title deed. So please contact the highways research team at highways boundaries for further details. So that's the highways note on that, which is, uh, that was what came out in March, I believe. Oh, May, sorry, May, that was issued. So I don't know if that helps with the issues with the private road and the fence thing.
I, I find it difficult to learn where they're talking about the, 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 the road that goes into the, the Robert's place. And the private, I mean, now there is, now the gates, there is actually no access at all on the private lane. For an issue which, you know, uh, we explained last time we came here. Um, and in part that issue was, um, that's now been removed. But as I say, my longer term, um, worry is about the fact that it's a very, very physical fence. And over time, that's going to be, it's always a disrepair. And either people won't know anything about it, given the free access onto the private road, or they will actually build a main gate. Or the same, the area that is of, I think, who I don't, the area fence whose ownership is, is there. I've actually just disappeared off there, providing a completely new roof into town, which I think, given the dense population of flea place, I think would be very, very problematic. If you can put that with a revised, a detailed layout, um, I think, um.
Let me have a look. I mean, that, if you go and look for it, please, just let me one second, and then I can bring it up for you. Find it, and then my millions of. I think it's probably quicker, right, so four, five, six. Probably easier just to take it straight off the website. So, let's have a look. So what date were the, uh, superseded? Was that the twenty eighth of, no? Twenty eighth of April or the nineteenth of?
No, there's some revised drawings in August.
Yeah, it's August, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the floor plan elevation. Oh, right, wait a minute. Site and block plan, is that the one you're after? Yeah. I'm going to do a little bit of skull dugger here. It's magic. I'm going to do. There we go. Is that on the screen? All right, wait a minute.
That looks very nice. It looks good. Free.
Let me go all the way to the end. They've just plonked it in on the end because it was easier than just putting the rest of it. Sorry, look how much you've got to look forward to. So much. Twenty eighty one slides. Oh, I didn't know. I did it not. Do apologies. What I'll do is I'll stop this. There you go. It's jumping around. I think technology's much, um, how's that? All right, let me make this a bit.
So there's a net reduction in one unit, um, two beds, so you have to replace with all the pack. But there is no, there's no three way now for, um, investment in, maybe on the place then.
Can I just check, just to keep my bearings? Where it says existing track at the top, that's a bridge road and all that bit there.
Existing track is the, it's been serviced, right, because we've been, it's lost.
So, and then that's the back of the bridge road. Yeah, that's on the slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you wanted to say something?
Yeah, sorry, I, I mean, I want to go on. I, I, I think that the road is quite a big problem. Um, also, I mean, I've got no problems with the, um, the fact that, I mean, I'm sure you all know that the equator is a very, very high density house here, by the bottom of Vicarage Road. And the top of Vicarage Road is actually, I mean, there are a couple of terrace houses, but they've all got, um, large gardens. Um, and what's essentially happening is the flea place is kind of bleeding everywhere to the top of the bridge road. Um, which has been completely changed the type of, of that area. Um, completely changed it. So that, you know, it, it has been potentially these posts. Um, and I find that actually very, very kind of objectionable.
Come on.
These places are in justice.
It's high density, it's high density housing.
Hey, Susan.
Yeah, um, I appreciate the reduction of the proposed dwellings from six to five. Um, and it's welcome, but basically it doesn't change the layout of, of the development or the impact on the outlook on the Vicarage Road houses. Um, and.
The, the wind, first all windows of the.
We closed the public session. I didn't want to run in commentary.
That's not fair. Okay. So, Robert, if you've got final comment, then I'll.
Well, one final comment, um, um, one of the various objections comments was about, um, first of all, I mean, in the garden and the, the pair of semis two stories, the new, the bedroom minister, the eastern best draws, I would say.
All right, so, yes, Susan.
Um, um, the proposed, uh, two story houses are quite close to the rear boundaries. And like quite small gardens of, um, about five metres in length, is that correct? Um, and the two bungalows are, um, also situated within four metres of each other. And, and I just feel that's in, it's a lot of contrast between that and the rear gardens and Vicarage Road, which are over, um, thirty metres long. Um, I mean, I, I'm no objection to the development of this land for housing, but I think it is, as it stands, it seems to be and, and, you know, in the long term, it does seem to be able to develop.
I understand gentlemen's concerns about where we've seen close, but this development, I would imagine that they have an impact on that because they'd be parking on that, they've only got, um, access through the place. I can't imagine they're going to be parking their vehicles there. Um, with regards to garden size, I mean, that's sure that's up to the person that buys the property because a lot of people don't love gardens. Um, you know, as long as they've got a small patch of, you know, I mean, I'll be going on what our, you know, our considerations are. I like a big garden, but it's not people who just move in a patch to sit on. Um, and with regards to fence line, well, we can't, we found that in other, other applications that we've proposed. You can't make a judgment on what may or may not happen. You know, we've got to consider the plans as they're presented now, not what may, may or may not happen in future.
Further comments?
Think being as we, um, objected to what's going on at the back of the Albion on, on scale of development. I think this is very close to that. So I again think it's, it's, it needs developing. It's a good area to develop, but it may be that it's overdone.
And I think the fence line for me, um, was the, I'm trying to remember the conversation we had last time. And that was the bulk of the concerns and the objections. So I think it's significantly improved, um, from that point of view. I think any issue about any future maintenance is more of a legal issue than a planning issue, to be honest with you. It's not really for us to, to determine on that, but, um, uh, it's a reduction, but I still, I would agree with Susie. It's, it does feel like overdevelopment to me. Um, and, and, you know, the fences have been clarified and improved, but, uh, you know, it still looks like there's a bit of space to me.
So I'll be supporter of the victor. Obviously, you have hands for support. So I'll take it then, we're objecting. Show of hands for objecting. So we're objecting on the grounds of overdevelopment. Suspect anything further we wish to add? Thank you, Natalie.
Okay, so objection due to overdevelopment of fault.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two D N six point seven, Mr. Fine. Don't be rash.
I'm there, I'm. Right.
Installation kitchen in the back extension with ventilation system.
That's one of the notes. Further next one is one seven. So that's the change of use from retail class E to food takeaway through generous installation of a kitchen in the back extension with a ventilation system, which is not part of the listed part of the building. So highways have no conditions, just, um, proved, uh, no objections, just conditions, which is that nothing is to overhang the footpath and there was no additional.
There's no changes to the building itself other than ventilation system.
Yeah. Let me just show you then.
Indication of what that's been.
Wait a minute. So that's the kitchen that's going in. So you'll have the fryer and the ventilation system will be above this part of the.
It should be visible at the back, like it is, I presume. Just the days on the front.
Listen, I mean, this time for quick repack.
So. And it's a change of use and given there's multiple other, uh, similar properties along there, it's virtually acceptable. And although, when I'm on there every day, I went for a quick look, I was amazed how many there are of that. Uh, there was a couple that I didn't even know were there. Um, and I don't know if we can make a comment about how we really are going to have to consider sort of, um, additional litter bins and stuff in that area. It's very difficult on that street, I know. But there's, you know, huge quantity of takeaways in that area. Uh, there's only really the one being on the, um, St Peter's Church bit there, isn't there? So we might want to have a look at that, but from a planning point of view, absolutely.
There is a
Dennis, you want to?
A tiny, tiny chimney just.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, I don't know, we can object on this because of the planning meeting, but that area is quite noted for anti-terrible behaviour. Especially in the alleyway, we're going down there through and I have an idea this may increase the anti-terrible behaviour in the area. So, uh, is there anything we can do on that? It's, it's congregation of bracers. Um, there has been ladies of the night there sometimes.
I do know that, Dennis.
And, um, And um, how do I know? Oh, no. Um, and I I think it's just, it's just, I mean, I don't think we should object because as Terry said, there's plenty of others, plenty of the spread around, but it is a noted area of um misuse.
Donna, thank you.
Sure. Which I have lost my my comments in the previous one. I mean, before. I I find it, I really struggle with this council with the lack of consistency of students. And I'll mention this once more, that this application, same before, I made it for a three year application. I believe what's the work system is concerning to the some of my side of the area of it. And there's the fact that when I started the council of twenty years now, but on first year, it was very clear in the local council, you know, the whole city around that they were to lunch all in the group, not the, except for me, as a leader. That they do not want any more food and drink present in the area, which were the fact not to have a small student one is. And one of the biggest reasons, by the time uh when the gentleman opened his special restaurant beside Audi where the proposal, it was firmly denied and the proposed by the two guys were accepting the just then the voting. And with the point of course, I'm telling you, not saying that's the same one, see, because we can't trust them, but saying the short ones all here at the time. The comments were, we don't need more of this, but we can even say, we said, the one more is so many. Um, this is the comments, I often add a different view. I think not to find the way, not to find what's it is important for the town as well, if I understand the thought. Um, and and obviously, all the applications that came through that time, of course, it's not the best thing for the time, but nine hundred plus. They didn't make it through the show that the casters. Since the way the spoons can lead, there was a big argument whether a lot of could be spent on market place. I mean, my point was, I mentioned on this on this council, that I would think some should be cheaper than the others, for the people to be mindful. They either they want a nice economy or they want businesses, but we people, workplaces where people can eat and drink and enjoy themselves, or they don't. What they come to is wanting for some and not for the others. Um, and we're going back to the same point. Uh, um, I realize this application is for an an area where there's already a lot of businesses. I do not know what type of business it is because I don't think we really have that information. It's just says that it's a change of business. It doesn't specify what type of particular, you know, products or services one sells to the customers. Um, but I remember a a common display on the back of my mind, some type of technology, my beginning council. Is that 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 area there attracts people that like most sunlight in the evening because of business being open. When the young flights are in alcohol and, you know, the different businesses that send it to work and creates a social, but having a drinking problems, et cetera, et cetera. Now, my point is, which I want to remind my fellow councillors here, is that please make your minds up to what whether we consider whether you want these things now or you don't want them. You know, actually, it's not ever going to be perfect. There will always be downfalls from both points of view, but at least to stand by their own decisions about their own points. You can't in one year decide you want all business to be leaving and overall the food and drink businesses are done. And next year, this time, well, actually, we don't want them here because we don't want any disruption. You know, the lack of consistency makes it unfair for those applying year by year. When it comes to this, providing that in a general way, if from planning point of view, what Jerry mentioned, it's not probable, there's not as good businesses there. I hope for business opening up even in the evening to buy their safety measures and the the fit are regulated properly. But please, please some consistency. I've been going at this for two years now and continue having the same problem when the council proving businesses that sell food out all the time, particularly in the house. So you're all concerned, but thank you.
Okay, Matt.
Uh, well, with my stag hat on, I do sort of generally approach oppose nighttime economy drinking um venues because um, you know, that's slightly different. I think a restaurant is slightly different. Um, I also think that um, as Dennis pointed out, there is so many social behaviour that happens in the alley. And actually, by having the building occupied by um a new business, will benefit that because they won't want that to continue. It will affect their business and all businesses can be regulated. So I think it would be dark to us to put any objection in against it at all. I think you can only benefit the area. Let's face it, it's an empty shop.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not to say that it won't be regulated once it's a restaurant, so.
So are we happy to support? Show of hands for support.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I do take on board, uh, because Jeremy's concerns about litter in the area. And I'd also add that it'd be nice to have the shop frontage that is pays reference to the conservation area. I do note that we've got a lime green shop frontage a little further up there, which I don't think.
But in the fullness of time, they'll have to come forward with the effort.
At the moment, we can't.
Because we don't know what it is.
All we've presented with is is this, but I, you know, the more we keep repeating that to try and get some reference to.
So what did you want? Supporter?
Supporter, um, um, I that um shop frontage in um.
Will be keeping.
Keeping with the conservation area. Would you call, obviously, they haven't put that forward yet. Okay, so we've gone to even eight to eight. Spring House, Mr. Bell.
Oh, okay. Honestly, I'm having such a nightmare today. I do apologize. So let me just read this out here first. So basically, they want to remove the plasterboard to expose vaulted ceilings on the first floor landing area and put in proper size door frames to the three bedrooms off the landing. Just get rid of this as well. I think I've must put my slideshow trying to add an image of slide in. I tried to be clever and I think I've buggered it up. So we've got, is it this? So, yeah, so there's only one, isn't there, for the, yeah, eight to eight is listed buildings and that's to remove plasterboard. So that's the one as well.
If there's eight to eight is shown, I don't think we've got eight to nine listed, but it will.
Yeah, yeah. So I think you're awfully certain you know where Spring Walk is.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so anybody who's lucky enough to be in the house. Um, that's probably easier if I'm sort of messing around. I just show you these. So basically, in the area that is in the centre of the house, they want to put plasterboards in and put in a vaulted ceiling and correct the size of the doors.
Remove plaster.
Remove plaster.
Expose.
Expose.
So I would suggest, you know, it's still, it's opposite, it needs to have a view on it and.
So he has the um, there's no objections but from the historic building officer. Um, and uh yeah, there's some um flood risk, no comment. Um, that's, yeah, it's just, yeah. I can confirm that the county councillor's lead flood authority has no comments to make at this time. Um.
It gets to the second floor.
Yeah, Natural England have made no objection. Yeah, um, yeah.
Are we happy to support?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
On then to F, eight five nine.
Yeah.
Pigeon Construction and Cable Route.
This is some of the most complicated maps I've ever seen. Honestly, there's about ten of them and I was like, right, let's try and get it down to a piece that's because they do the whole area. So this is about um putting the electric cabling in. Um, which was originally going to be done by Breckland, if you remember. I can't remember how many years ago it was, several. And then um you're probably better placed actually, Terry, to know that um they decided that they were not going to do that anymore and they were going to hand it over to Pigeon to do the works instead. So this bit comes to us because basically it's going to be going over nuns or under
Under.
nuns bridges. And so therefore, um, what is required is um for there to be, they're going to drill under the river. I know.
So we had a presentation um from the previous applicants on this. They talked about boring, underneath it.
Underneath it.
We, you know, spoke about, you know, the stomachs bridges is is it impact the structure and also the potential of a alongside there, whether potentially you could have a pedestrian walkway. Uh, and we were assured that that wouldn't impact upon that. So I presume this procedure methodology they were proposing for that is exactly what was coming forward to that.
Yeah, so what what basically they're looking for from us, obviously to agree to the um planning, but also we're in the uh process of uh producing an easement because there's a bit of our land that they have to go across, which is at the in between the two bridges. So we're just looking at that. Interestingly, uh, there's no deeds for us owning that piece of land, which is proving a bit of a legal nightmare, just as an aside. Um, so it is the the cable going below the public highway. In most cases, it's actually, it's not going, it's going actually into the uh uh what's already under the
That's under the road.
But obviously, when it gets to the river, it's got to go down under.
Underarmy.
Yeah.
Or maybe arm. So for planning, the easement side is is nothing to do with this meeting. This is purely the plans for this. We, I think in cases before us, we we've accepted that it was a necessary even to have the as a service with that power. So any comments?
Um, Natural England have got no objection. Um, and they said that basically the summary, because they write huge long things, don't they? Uh, is that the based on the plan submitted, Natural England considers the proposal development will not have significant adverse impacts on the statutorily protected nature conservation sites or landscapes. And apart from our beloved creeping marsh wood, that is not going to be affected because it's in the wrong place. Uh, the ecology report is that actually most of it is of low value in that area.
Think, well, Terry's just raised a similar point in the timing of it and bridges being shut. Is there any indication along those?
No, I suspect that our um easement may be delaying the fact that because they can't get that, maybe delaying.
Terry, didn't sneak up.
Yeah, there's only two points. One is this around uh traffic because um one of our main discussions when this first came up was the length of time that the road would be blocked off. I think it's about six months. So it's going to be a significant um issue. And I haven't studied it in detail, but I would hope it's not going to take any longer than that. And I would certainly like for us to encourage uh them to um operationally deliver this in a way that really minimizes the disruption because we all see the impact of when the language is shut off. Um, the impact on the rest of town. So if we can encourage them to uh keep it shut for a minimum, uh, I think we should do that. And and secondly, although I appreciate the comments about low value in terms of um their nature, uh, I would also encourage them to really minimize uh removal of trees and bushes along the route uh rather than sort of hacking them all back. Um, uh, not so much around that, which is certainly along the rest of the route. I mean, it's Green Lane, although they're now going up Norwich Road rather than Green Lane and stuff. But even so, the less they can get away with chopping back, the better in my view.
Interesting.
Well, now Terry's done very only job of asking the question that I want to. So well done, I'm sure. You know.
Okay, Donna?
Always about the traffic. It's a nightmare, but let's find a record we better.
Right, just one, uh, not about the bridge at all, but about the roads. So we've just had Norwich Road completely resurfaced and they're going to dig out. So the the question is, how are they going to do it? Because what they tend to do is this um, this uh boring hole going along a bit, coming up again with boring hole. And what you end up then is a road just got a patchwork of holes in it.
Yeah.
But it's cheaper and less invasive for them. They're digging a trench. The difference is what they can do is they can dig a trench and resurface outside of a road. So at least you get a good surface.
That's really right.
We're going to end up with a major route all the way through our town with much work being a much more concern. So, sorry, we do know the um repairs were made on Council Lane uh as a reminder of how we we fix problems on the road, so. Hmm, thanks.
There isn't actually anything yet about what that's going to look like.
No, it's good fun. So I presume I propose that we are at a quarter because of the strategic necessity of it.
Yeah.
And can we raise those concerns about the
So.
length of closure?
I've put request that um the removal of trees and hedges is kept to a minimum.
Yeah.
And that um there's a concentrated focus on minimizing traffic destruction, uh destruction. No, we don't want that, do we? Disruption.
And I think the um point about reinstatement and.
That reinstatement of that any reinstatement.
Services will be to, you know, standard previously. Yeah. As experienced as talk.
Or do we put to a high standard as opposed to because not all of the surfaces are particularly good?
At least the standard that existed before.
To stand least standard of existing. That's it, yeah. It's hard to be a bit careful on that one, but it's not all great.
You may have a stock, Amy.
No.
I know.
All right, so we go on to G then on the two.
So this is the proposed kitchen extension and shed and the relocation of existing cold store, shed and fence line at the children's garden centre.
So did we have this one before or have they completed the one that we had before?
Yes, this is a new one. So um, this is the existing block plan. For those of you who are very familiar with, and let me just go on to bigger. Is that going?
I know personally, personally, I shouldn't.
Things maybe.
Yeah, I think with all that there. So this is the existing block plan. And it's hard to notice the difference. I know you have to look quite closely. You blinked, did you? So so literally, uh, most of the issues is of external. So it's just this little bit, yeah, on the right at the top. So, um.
So we've got any elevations of that, just good.
It's happened. Yeah. That's equally not particularly helpful because it is a very small part. So uh that's existing and that's what it's moving to. So like I say, it is literally a very small proportion of.
We need to do a stick on it.
The thing is, I'm not being funny, but even when you get up close to it, you, because now they no longer send you anything that blows up to A three. Everything you get is absolutely teeny weeny and they don't send them that any paper plans or anything anymore. That's so this is, you know, I get them in. Is it?
So I'm having sport.
Yep.
Yep.
You know, you're listening in at times.
Yeah, yes.
Send her name to gift shop. Restaurant.
Yes.
Let's go on.
There you go. They can probably see it better on here. If you look into the top right hand corner. The little bit literally. There you go. That's the change.
I abstained on that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're happy to support.
Yeah. So that we all make sure we still get our sandwiches. So eight nine three, which was on previously was removed.
Three H, no, the centre.
So I do have a slight change on this. And that is, I was told today that they cannot get as many that's a very small block plan. That's a slightly better block plan. They cannot get as many electrical charging points in as they wished. So I think they're having to remove, I think, two, let me have a look. Paperwork, so I literally got an email as I was coming out. Saying, can you tell them that there's not going to be as many charging points?
So at the moment, this car park is tart surface, isn't it?
Yeah.
That one is tend to be used as a
So, yeah.
ride onto it, uh, but certainly.
So there's been a minor amendment where they are unable to provide the electrical charging points originally specified in the drawing. So they have reduced the number of them. So now. this is the new one. I think it looks like there's only two, it's only two electrical ones instead of how many there was on there.
So all those ones are gone then?
Yeah, no, they're, yes, they are now F, which is a future electric, but E. So there's only two dedicated, and there was three or four before. Yeah. So there's only two dedicated electrical points for charging.
And is that because of capacity of the supply? He needs to be moved in that way.
It doesn't, doesn't say why it's been reduced.
Sorry, Terence.
No, yeah. It's set up that new spaces disabled free. So somewhere in that top block there presumably there's three new disabled bays. I can see lots of readies, but I can't see additional disabled bay. My one observation would be, I mean, my dad's the same. So occasionally you have to take him up there. And and there's often the the car park bays closest to the helping center are always full. And often I've had to park, you know, quite far away and, you know, he's always in. And I can't see where the new disabled bays are on the top one. And I'm surprised how few there are given, you know, it's a healthy living centre. They go there for visiting and stuff.
So they're saying new spaces three, don't they?
Yeah, presumably that's in the new.
So what I think what they've done on these. And they're what they said on this in the incredibly small writing is that existing spaces have been reconfigured to maintain five disabled spaces following the construction of a new internal passenger lift.
Yeah, so there's five being retained because they're putting the lift in outside. They're actually losing. But it says three new ones, which presumably up the top there somewhere, but I can't see them.
Yeah, because it says new is three, but I can't see anything marked on there either. One would have to assume that they're going to.
Well, there'd be a wider space anyway.
In these.
There used to be some in the top row as well. There was two in the top row.
Unless they're saying that these are the new ones.
Five there and there was used to be two above. Yeah.
Wheelchair man.
So to me, it seems like they did correct it. There's a lot of them and having them armed along the middle plan. I thought this is not like a centre signal. They haven't got them marked, but they are, they wanted to save the ones.
Yeah.
Is this the area between the of the living centre and the sports centre?
Yes.
Or is it taking in the sports centre?
As far as it's just that area, thank you. That's all.
But we're losing some green space again.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's where we always put the service.
I mean, I think eight is not a number. I think if we, I mean, I'm fully in support of it. I wonder if we might perhaps be able to comment to ask them. Is A sufficient? I mean, they should know, but certainly from my observations of going up there, it's not sufficient, but they may tell us otherwise. I suspect the people that designed this will.
They probably did it on their laptop.
Subject to asking to revisit the number of disabled spaces. And the encouragement of electric points.
Yeah. So however, would request more? However, would request more disabled spaces? Because it does say that the the points are because there's going to be served by cable ducting for future installation. So the ducting isn't part of this installation, which is why that's not. Yeah. It's for more disabled spaces.
Other than this, so to presume that several people do not use electrical cars. I am confused. So I don't understand why they put all the parking flat line, just a single normal regular parking for electrics. But they can all get any electric parts for disabled users, which is really a bit bizarre. So while we're using the several space on the regular car, we also need to be on a new ones, which is.
Shall I put strongly encourage the implementation of electric charging spaces, including one for the disabled parking?
Yeah.
It just makes sense that people want to buy electrical cars.
I'm actually here right that we lose the green space for the.
Yes.
See the other pieces down the bench stuff where people can't actually.
I I don't think you're losing the whole green space. I think you're losing. A, yeah. A slice.
A slice. I mean, we had major problems up the front of the ball. Eventually, when they were talking about the kitchen breath, it was supposed to give us the same area green space back. But never, never did. Never had a reduction to spaces that we've lost. We seem to be eroding more and more of the green spaces and dancing off the ones that are up there.
I think you're right, Chris. We as a town have wanted to manage regulation space.
They've sold this to the NHS or more like or the record, you know, potentially giving some money that may revest it back into sport.
You may know more than.
About that. So I thought, are you going to do a reveal?
I'm not sure how it ties into parkwood leases and things like that.
So ask the question.
Because the point that Chris raises is very true because that will leave us with a very small sliver going up towards football pitch. And then as it turns right in front of where the fence is, that is also used by for footballers and car park. So essentially, even the green space that we do have is car parking. So everything behind parkwood leisure will be car park in one form or another. It's not managed space. It is.
But, you know, it's like any lots of green space, having to take someone there on a regular basis. It was a nightmare to park. You know, when you've got someone who can't move very fast, there's no other option of swaying and park and get to the hell, you know, you couldn't get there, park somewhere else and use a wheelchair. You know, so I think it's essential to have extra parking there.
Yeah, if you want to. Yeah.
So I would suggest we're a supporter, but we do want to make reference to the lots of green space, recreational green space.
And she's referenced loss of recreational.
And would like to see this provided elsewhere.
No, we haven't. It's, you know, it's a gristle. He's saying I need to up there.
So we have that? Yes, yes. All right, moving on then. To nine two one. There's twenty nine Shelley Way.
Twenty nine Shelley Way is to demolish the existing garage and porch and replace with erection of a two storey side extension to include new garage, W C and new master bedroom. Single story pitch roof extension to ground. And they will remove the wall to the side of the property and replace it with a one point eight close board fence. So that's the location. See the area to the right of it. That's the development area. So this is the existing ground floors and first floors.
So again, just fully detached.
Yeah. And then this is what it's moving to. So they're incorporating the garage and building up over and above the garage. I don't know what the other houses in Shelley Way. Is there any of them?
It's doing that is not named plot. Back to a plan.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The top street is bird's place.
Yes. So it's a little walkway, I think, to the right to get, isn't it?
Is it, is it flat roof?
Yeah, it's going up. Looks to be keeping existing.
Yeah.
Nine two five eleven Water Lane.
So this is a single story side extension garage conversion and increased height of rear wall from two meter to two point six meters with the use of bamboo fencing. Yes. So here it is on the, it's a pretty big plot actually on Water Lane. And you can see what's marked by the red rectangle is the area that they're discussing. So this is the existing ground floor and you can see to the top left where the top is the existing and the bottom is the proposed where the additional build will go. Yeah. And this is the existing front and proposed front. And the existing rear and proposed rear. So actually, it's the front that has the change in elevation. It's the site existing.
Just the thoughts on the bamboo fencing goes to something different.
Is it something that they just put up because it's taller, perhaps to stop people having a look, is it?
So it's going only up, you know, six hundred mil. Rear wall from two meters.
Sixty centimeters. Yeah.
What bamboo fencing looks like. Does it look like?
That's the only thing you really want to watch.
That fence line is between the other property at the back.
He's a part of it at the back.
Yeah. So it's not actually a fence at the front or side.
No, it's a bad wall. He's putting another half meter on top of it. So so you can buy the bamboo wall and stuff where they're just putting that on for a layer of fence.
Yeah. Because isn't there? I think on the corner, somebody's already got it, haven't they? Because when you go on the corner and you can look through the houses, I think somebody's got it up at the back. Maybe.
Right. So just a supporter generally. So on to nine four four K then ten Redgate.
So this is a retrospective patient for the proposed new gym and workshops. Not a fan.
I presume it's just a gym for personal use, Rob.
Go through. So, yeah. So ten, this is ten Redgate. Who the.
Buildings that have been added at some point.
Yeah.
So were they just put up or were they existing ones that he wants to come with?
So he's already done the work. So this is nine four four and nine five two is the work of the, for the gym and the workshop has already been done. So what happened is basically he let me just show you. I was just looking at the application form itself. Because that they take literally everything off these things. Then I've just got this paper with nothing written on them. So they put up a so it is wooden boarding with a membrane roof, grey aluminium doors and windows. And they just basically built it and then asked for the permission after they'd built it.
Yes.
Yeah. I actually tell you, we all assume it's a personal gym, but we have no proof either way, do we?
No, I mean, you can see. Because because there kind of was an outbuilding sort of thing before. And what they've done is they've made it slightly bigger. If you look at this picture here, it's probably easier to look at this one, isn't it? Because we can actually read it.
But I think that had been with just the garage and storeroom attached to the back and they've just extended beyond that. And you see these garden roofs that people.
This was like the garage bit and he's just extended it across and changed. So this is like the wooden boarding.
It goes all the way along that fence.
It does. Yeah, it takes all the way up to the.
It took quite a thoroughly garden.
Explains a little more to the.
I'm getting retroactive.
I know.
I I wasn't hoping to skip for that.
I object. I'm object. I'm to get rejected. So you're rejecting.
Okay.
On the grounds of old.
It's like over development.
Over development.
If everybody on Redgate did that, they'd have no car.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Because the next one is the same. It's ten Redgate as well. So that's nine nine five. Yeah. So nine five two, yeah, is is the is the same property. So if I go across. It's because we've put it all in application order number because we're very efficient like that. But then I notice they're the same one. So this is the same one. It's proposed side extension and window blocked up the front elevation. So same again. No, this isn't retrospective. So. So you can see where the little arrow is, is what he's intending to block. Yes, that, sorry, minute. Again, look. That's existing. Yeah. And this is what they're going to do. So basically the blocking up the window.
Blocking up the line. But on on the last application, did it not show it's blocked up anyway? Because it was all greyed out.
No, that was the extension for the garage.
So that's not.
No, it's a different, different part of it.
It looks to me like it, but that bit there, that's the front elevation, isn't it?
Yes.
It looked to me like that bit was greyed out on there.
I think because it was showing you what's happening behind certain map profile.
All right, okay.
Do you just go back to that, please? I think it was probably.
Because that's the so there's the window that you're talking about. That's in the existing. Yeah.
Yeah. From a planning point of view, it says proposed side extension and window blocked up. I suspect we're being asked to consent to the side extension rather than the window. I mean, it's all lumped together, but really from a planning point of view, it's just the side extension. We're saying it's a lot of window up or not. You don't require planning permission, do you?
Wouldn't have thought so.
Go directly.
They have no right to like anymore. We can legitimize the side extension.
Tommy, you've put a new window in if you tend to get permission, don't you?
This might not be a consultation area there. I didn't have an issue with side extensions.
Yeah, we still look from the front. It's the state of those windows. We just haven't looked back at that previous elevation that Matt was talking about.
Yeah, let me go back. Do that one.
That one. It's the one you talked about in the Mac. So the, all right. So the grey area, I think, is the bit at the bottom of that.
So that's that's a different, yeah, that's a different elevation.
So I'll be objecting to the window being blocked up. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And and the objection for the window being blocked up is due to.
A change in the. A change in the, um. Sorry, character with the rest of the estate, those, those windows, like when it's originally built.
Yeah.
Not in character with surrounding.
Yeah. It's going to enhance the doodah.
Okay.
Come on, the word.
I'll put that in. Ambience.
I think every street should have doodah anyway. There's a certain word in my memory.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, we should.
Bingo.
Right, so I've put these two together, nine four five and nine four six.
Okay, so on to twenty three twenty three A Old Market Street.
Yeah, so this is the replacement of two lots of, um, windows, basically. And it's the same plans for both of them, you'll be pleased to know. So it's a replacement of all existing painted timber, a single glazed casement windows with slim line, a double glazed painted timber flush casement windows. And the second delight. There's, um, if I can find it, where's the other one from? Because there's two different windows that we're dealing with, not just any old window. The different sort of window, if I can find it, let me go back to that.
All within.
And the re, and the, um.
Yeah.
Yes, and the replacement of all existing painted timber, single glazed sash windows with slim lined, double glazed, painted timber slash windows. So they're going from single glaze to double glaze, but keeping it within the timber frames.
Oh. What's that, no, that'd be doing in my house.
I, I don't think that's a planning objection.
I mean, I, I'm fine, you know, I don't understand, but I, I just, yeah, it is, it. It really, yeah, the, um. The building may be able to have an objection.
No, they don't, because there was a pre discussion.
It's in our.
I couldn't possibly comment.
It's in our.
Susie, you want to?
Yeah, I think you, so the middle replacing them with slim lined double glaze windows. What actually means the size of the windows changing or the.
You, well, I think what you tend to happen is if you've got a single glazed, um, bit, you know, when you put a new one in, because of the double glazing, usually gets quite thick, but these are in, you know, the reduced thickness. Now, double glaze, so I would suggest that probably more in keeping.
Yeah, yeah.
Than if you went to try to get a normal double glazing.
Yeah.
Yes. But the objection.
So I think removing such windows, but then they're closing the similar.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, okay, it's our, it's our, it's our support.
It's good for the environment.
So we need to support those?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, both of those, yeah?
Yes, please. On.
Yeah.
Nine five six, Almoston Church.
Almoston Church, oh, let me just. On that one. Want to roll now. So continues a flat roof building for church activities that were approved under seven nine one. I'm afraid that the maps on this one are fairly.
I think most of us know where it is.
Yes.
Flat roof building at the back, isn't it? Terrific, I mean.
Yeah. So these are the. Elevations, I'm afraid that they're really, um, not particularly.
Yeah, so no, nothing changes, is it?
No.
Continual use of it.
Yeah.
Haven't limited to use life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See the two or three years of.
Yeah.
So that's very useful, you know, to keep it applying.
Yeah, I'm afraid that they weren't the best of, um, plans that we got.
There's a match that I walked past there yesterday and they were there painting it and, you know, making a good job and tidying it up, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay.
That's important.
Good community thinking, so it is.
Yeah. So.
Nine seven three, then sixteen Sol Drive.
Okay, two storey extension to the side of the detached property. So. This is the. Site map of the property, which is an end property. Not to this one. So, and you can see quite a. Large area. On the corner, see. State, so these are. After the update, let me just. It might be easier to read this, it's incredibly tiny, I think.
It's a green lane.
So. So these are the. Existing elevations.
Yeah. Just see the bit that. Sorry, isn't it two story?
Mm hmm. So. This is. See it in here. It might be easier if you look at this. It is very small.
Yeah, you can see the bit of the side there.
Yeah.
Comments? Happy to support?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. On to nine seven six, eighty six.
Proposed. Number one facian and number one projecting sign. So this is going on what was the. Bank building. And brush yourselves.
Hello. How under two.
So that's the requested advertising. Um, not making it better, really.
Do you have a planning policy somewhere? You know, sign. We've had it rejected. I'm sure projecting signs, we really do object in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's actually illuminated. Oh, a minute, it might be a sign, it could be, oh yes, eco luxe mini trough light fixed to the fixing flange. So it's light on to it. As opposed to.
A bar in the middle.
Some of those. So I think when we had something, the last, when we had it come up down King Street with Subway, and one of the things we did talk about there was having shop frontage that was more in keeping with a. A style, I mean, maybe like a wooden thing, a bit, it circulated some examples that felt more appropriate rather than this white glass. And, so I think. The Terry's right, we did in the part, um, set out our stall with what we felt was suitable for conservation area with a view to a long term, you know, desire to have more appropriate shop frontages rather than plastic and glass everywhere. Um, so if we're being consistent, Carla, that would be something that we, we would. We would, I would suggest a reference to that, uh, and any comments we do make.
Who would check in, keep a local plan or the area action plan or whatever it is? And for the policy number and actually quoting that, because somebody did say to me recently that we don't, that Thetford as a whole don't, um, reference the actual policy numbers well enough, something that's involved in planning at Breckland. And, and where we have policies that enforce our argument or, you know, consistent with, we should refer to the policy. And there is something about conservation area in the local plan, and I'm sure that this would be contrary to it, so we should.
Because they did, um, they did, they did, um, adopt. The revised Thetford area action plan into the local plan.
Right, yes.
So that was pretty much adopted in total, wasn't it? There was very few, um, amendments made to that. And there is also a planning policy, but obviously that's just. Um, that's not actually embedded into the local plan, that's more of guidance for councillors. But it is actually in the local plan, but I can look that up, so that's for, um, conservation area, yeah?
Yeah.
I seem to remember, as you were correctly saying, that there was something. There was something about certain streets.
Yeah, we did raise it on, on the subway, and I think the planners came back to say, um, they would. Because we had our town council policy, which is not part of the whole, you know, adopted area action plan, but it's something that we chose to put forward so that developers or, you know, could come in there. May, you know, pay reference to that and be a little synthetic to our desires, um, for King Street. Um, so I think that we've made lessons to, we looked that up too, that we'd said on the subway there.
Yeah.
Because I think that stand still has to stay, and taking on Terry's point about the. Reference numbers of the policy.
Yeah. Not appropriate for a conservation area.
Just, James, I think a moment, that, um, we, when we were having the Breckland members briefing about the delivery plan that these, you know, hatch and these consultants have produced, and there's a section in there about having a sort of heritage theme, town centre and blah blah. And I said, you know, that's never going to happen, because it's massively extensive. I said, what you need to be doing is having a revised approach to planning appropriately. So that over time, we gradually phase out things like this. And Paul Pals and the deputy leader did say that he would take it away and look at that, because, um, you know, we've got to start actually having an agreed approach to planning. And Breckland have got to start enforcing what's appropriate and what's not in a conservation area, in an historic town like that. And I think this is a good example where if this is approved, then we'll just continue into more of that stuff then, rather than gradually shaping into what we want.
So you, you've got enough to object there.
Yep.
And take on board the, the points of what.
Yeah.
We've said, our internal, it contradicts our internal or the town council planning.
Yeah.
So what the, our action plan comments and, um, I think it's just not appropriate for. Town centre construction. Having that?
Yeah.
People say it's not appropriate.
Well, no, but what's in front of us today is the signage. So we want to, are there nine seven nine fifty one Redgate, back to Redgate?
So this is a single story front extension. So this is the. Site plan and the existing on the elevations that will be affected. And this is on the site plan where it will go at the rear and the changes in elevation. So I could just go back, you can just see this going on the front. So there'll be a front with a side door as opposed to a big front door.
Which. Look at the, the building line, um, it's a staggered building line by the looks of it anyway. So it seems to be bringing the front in line with the one on the left, um, rather than keep this. None, so I think. Supporter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So nine nine nine.
Yeah. He's electrical, so this is the signage that's going to be going up at the new Hughes shop at Stapleford Way. So this is the area that it's going into, which is between, it's like it's between, um.
Being the wrong.
Um, yeah, and Ausland, yeah. So this is the area that the signage is going to go into. And this is what they wish to put up. So they need to put their flash on the, um, big totem boards at the front. And, um, they'll be putting their signage in the top glass areas where the shops all have their.
It's less intrusive there, isn't it? It is what it is, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have some, so it's not a bad place to move your park, cool, they've made massive signs up anyways.
You're likely support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I assume that's a washing machine.
It's not a washing.
Washing machine. A beach bra, what's that all about? Does it move to the music, supports to the music? So.
On to one one nine fifty seven Newtown.
Okay, so this is an outline planning application, including access with all other matters reserved for the demolition of the existing garage, subdivision of the plot and the erection of a new single dwelling and associated works, including stopping up of the current site access and provision of a new access for number fifty seven. So. It is the area that they are talking about. And you can see where they're going to put the division line in. And this is what they intend the plots to look like. That's all there is on it at the moment, there's no actual.
So just cut the garden, it's off, coming forward to the.
Yeah.
It's. Well, very sorry, that's a really good time. I went down to the bay to have a look. It's areas who, if you want to, which can be there, then one of the biggest gardens in the whole of Newtown.
I think Chris is right, I'm trying to email this stuff through, and we've seen this happen on a way, exactly the same situation. You know, detached or semi detached houses, um, space at the side, and they're basically filling in all the gaps, you know, various different people. And, and the gardens are so long, they are quite, um, unmanageable in a lot of places, so I can entirely understand, it is infill, basically. Um. You can fit, you know, they're putting two car park invasion, I think that's, you know, that's good, and they're both going to have a reasonable sized garden, so. And, yeah, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. Back to support?
Yeah.
Do you think?
It's a late planning applications.
There was five. But as, as you have a meeting in two weeks' time, I didn't care, I've asked for extensions on them all. Because I thought twenty five probably would have been a bit, just a bridge too far in one evening, and we wouldn't, I've only actually received the bulk of those today. So there wouldn't have been time for anybody to have a look at them, so I've asked for extensions on them all.
Okay, so three, two, four, two, decisions and variants.
Uh, no, I think mainly because we didn't have the last one, so we're there, but I haven't had any three.
Three, two, five, two, two, ours we referred to great effective partnership.
And we did, um, on the previous meeting, put forward some items, if you remember, but actually the GTP meeting was cancelled. And so, um, that action was taken, but, um, the, the meetings now, I believe, November? Is that right? Beginning of November? Um, third of November at the Charles Borough Centre, so at two P M, I could remember that bit, but I couldn't remember the date.
Just wondering in light of the electrical thing, whether we can just take all our concerns to that as well, because they tend to get overarching involvement with the, the planning of it.
Okay, yeah.
I think mainly around the, the planning timing of it, um, so they've minimized the impact on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So basically, you want me to ask if they can, um.
Consider.
Yeah.
The time scale.
Consider the time scale.
Yeah. And the time of it.
But they have much more of a notification and definitions that involve that, not every project for the ones that involve that respect anyway. So how we're really, how we can push for things to be found a bit easier, that will be by, by, you know, getting the word across to those, to those groups that, which, just maybe is able to. Could plan for it, do it, because somehow they are all linked in all parts.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, for jumping trees, so.
Thank you. And then three, two, six, three, two, our old friend, Quarry at Barnham, that's happening further.
No, I mean, I do have some more, um, but basically, what the. There's been an argument backwards and forwards between the wildlife groups. And, um, they. Suffolk and Norfolk Wildlife Trust, in, in a nutshell, they've maintained their objections. They've come back and, you know, the planning authorities came back and said, oh, you know, this is, we, we think this is okay, that's okay, blah, blah, blah. But I have the paperwork, I don't know if you want to read it, and there's several pages. But the crux of the matter is that, um, they think that there is going to. They think that there is going to be impacts because of the cumulative vehicle admissions. And therefore they are maintaining their objections. That's my weekly thing, I'll look over every week.
Two, seven, twenty, any community engagement? And then you commit the office to update.
And no, there's been nothing since the agenda's gone out.
Thank you all very much for your attendance and apologies for mine.